19 is on page 19-1, over to the top of page 19-2. Only one of the usual corrections, and that is that the first line is voted to adopt the following resolution, et cetera, relating to the Boston as a site for the 2024 Olympics, about which you will hear in probably exhaustive detail. Moved by Mr. Rosenthal, seconded by Ms. Hummel. Mr. Rosenthal.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Marty Rosenthal, Precinct 9, co-chair of PACS. When I first heard about the Olympics coming to Boston, I was frankly excited. It sounded like a fun idea. It was a January TAB article about it when I saw Mel Kluckness when asked, what's this going to affect in Brookline? He said, everything. And it hit me, well, gee, there might be some issues here. And the first thing I did is try to figure out how much of Brookline is surrounded by Boston. I couldn't come up with an exact figure. We put in a guess in the Warren article. Well, the first thing I did was talk to Chris and think if this would be a good idea. And we did do a Warren article. If I could have slide number one, please. This is more for the benefit of the non-Brookline people. You all know what's up there on slide number one. We're basically surrounded by Boston on most of our boundaries. In fact, that's from a B.C. website, and it says, surrounded on three sides by Boston. Slide number two, please, is the town website, which again says, surrounded, suburban enclosed, surrounded by the city. And by the way, makes reference to the fact that we're the first representative town meeting in Massachusetts. So then I talked to my co-chair Frank Farlow and asked if he thought if this was a good idea, and he said, yes, that let's do something about this. Now Frank is someone that will schedule a board meeting on Super Bowl Sunday. But if I could have slide number three, I'm a sports fan, and this is my current softball tee shirt, my Patriots sweatshirt from the Super Bowl, and that's me at Brookline High in 1964. So I'm not against the Olympics. But the first question that came to my mind is, why didn't they talk to Brookline? Now, this is not my biggest issue, to be honest with you. They had a meeting in Cambridge in December. Cambridge passed a resolution against the Olympics. The Olympics people, 2024, Boston 2024, said, we're going to now have a new phase of extensive public outreach. Well, we had at least four hearings in Brookline. I went to all of them. Chris went to all of them. Our lead petitioner, who's a wonderful guy, was ill after filing the petition. He's back. We're happy to have him. He's on the speaker list, Lee Bernbaum. I didn't know him beforehand. But we went to all these hearings. Boston 2024 came to one of them. Mr. Davy came to one hearing before the advisory subcommittee hearing. But this is, again, is not my biggest issue, that we may feel miffed or whatever. The biggest issue for me is what are the pros, what are the cons, and who makes the decisions? I'm going to let Chris talk about the cons and the risks. I want to talk about one potential pro. One of our selectmen, no longer on the board, I thank him for his service, however, said, well, what about showcasing Boston? Boston doesn't need to be showcased. If we could go to the fourth slide, please, this is Dan Wasserman, recently showing his take on, does Boston really need this? I don't think there are more than four cities in the country that don't need showcasing the way, like Boston. It'd be San Francisco, New York, New Orleans, and Boston. We do not need showcasing, with all due deference to the person who used that word. Now, the biggest question for me, really, I'll let Chris talk about the cost and the risks, he knows those issues. The biggest question for me is who's making these decisions? Slide number five, please. These are the deciders, Boston 2024. They think they can get us by celebrities. That's slide number five. Slide number six, their shakeup. We're still on the same page. These are Globe headlines. They did a shakeup and brought in more celebrities. Slide number seven, this really hit me when I saw the Boston Magazine cover of John Fish, "Construction Magna John Fish, I Run This Town." Now, I think that's Boston Magazine's words. I don't think he said it in the article. In fact, I didn't read the article. But that was the cover of the magazine. The next one is also from Boston Magazine. It wasn't on the cover. Slide number, I think I'm up to eight now, is Mayor Walsh. He was not on the cover, but he's the other person who's involved with this. Now, at the advisory committee, subcommittee, I think it was Michael Sandman, asked me, what would satisfy you? And my answer was, well, if we had elected officials deciding these things, infrastructure, public improvements, priorities, and money issues, I'd be happier with elected officials. So Mr. Davy, who was there, that's the one hearing he came to, said, well, Mayor Walsh is going to have a veto. Please raise your hand if you voted for Mayor Walsh in this room. The fact of the matter is that these are being decided by what I learned in my master's degree for political science many, many years ago, is what's called a plutocracy. And that gets me to slide number nine, which is what Woodrow Wilson said about plutocracy with a wonderful sketch from Seniors for a Democratic Society, which I think includes me, although I'm not a member of their group. Now, we are not NIMBYists in Brookline. We are publicly oriented. We believe in government service. We believe in greater Boston. We believe in Massachusetts. Slide number 10, we voted two to one for indexing of the gas tax. We are not people that don't care about the public. But what we do care about is our former government, which is what's called Republican, with a small r, government. We believe in democracy. Slide number 11, going to some of the old favorites, John Adams, Justice Brandeis, another one might be Abe Lincoln, government for the people, by the people. The fact of the matter is that I end with slide number 12, the Legal Women Voters Guide, just last month for Brookline, democracy is not a spectator sport. We're not spectators. We want to be spectators for the Olympics, but not for the way public priorities get decided in Boston, in Brookline, in Massachusetts. It ought to be elected officials doing it, not these plutocrats. So it's been questioned, why do we have to do this now? Why not wait? Because the momentum has to be stopped now. The time to send this message is now. Not to wait until around the time of referendum, not to wait until the town meeting in November. We have to send this message now. We hope somebody will listen more than the Boston 2024 people appear to be. Thank you very much.
Mr. Dempsey, you have five minutes left of your 12-minute time block.
Chris Dempsey, town meeting member, Precinct 6, and volunteer co-chair of an organization called No Boston Olympics. Let's go through 10 things to know about Boston 2024. Slide number two, item number one. Boston 2024 is not going to fix the T. They are not proposing new revenue for the MBTA. They are not agreeing to tie their ballot question to a question about new revenue for the MBTA. And when you host an Olympics, you definitely build a stadium, you definitely build a velodrome. Everything else is a nice-to-have. Item number two, next slide. Boston 2024's plan for an Olympic Village sounds awfully a lot like what happened in London and Vancouver. In both of those cities, promises were made that 100% of the financing would be private. In the end, in London, 100% of the financing was public financing. Developers pulled out after the bid was awarded and left taxpayers to build the Olympic Village. We're headed down the exact same path with Boston 2024. Next slide. There is no such thing as American Olympic exceptionalism, maybe in the way we compete in the Olympics, but not in the way that we run Olympics. Lake Placid had more than 3X cost overruns and required a bailout by the state of New York at inflated prices to prevent bankruptcy of the organizers and the city of Lake Placid. Salt Lake had an indictment scandal, bribery scandal that led to indictments of the organizers. Atlanta reported a $10 million profit on $2.2 billion in spending. We'd get a lot better return if we went down to Brookline Bank and put our money in a savings account. And Los Angeles, which was profitable, is the only city to not provide a financial guarantee, and we'll talk about that later. Item number four, the USOC and the IOC are not our friends, and they do not share our interests. Monaco has more votes at the IOC than Massachusetts. Luxembourg has more votes than Massachusetts. The Princess of Liechtenstein, Princess Nora, has more votes than Massachusetts. I do not, I'm sure she's very nice, but I do not think she was stuck on the T like the rest of us were this winter. Item number five, every Olympics since 1960 has a cost overrun, has had a cost overrun, every single one. It's not just because you're building complex things, it's because there is an incentive by the boosters to undervalue the price, or under-set the price now, win the bid, and then realize that they actually did that, and they need to find more funding. Item number six, taxpayer dollars are already being eyed to fund what was once the private games operations. They have moved $300 million from the OCOG budget, which is their private budget, and asked federal taxpayers to pick up that bill. That's for things like chauffeurs for IOC dignitaries and closing of Olympic lanes or highway lanes for Olympic dignitaries that the rest of us will not have access to. Item number seven, Boston 2024's bid requires building the three most expensive Olympic venues. Do not believe the tale that this is going to use existing facilities. We have to build an Olympic Village. We have to build an aquatics center. We have to build a velodrome. In London, those items cost $1.4 billion. Every single one of them cost more than double the cost that was stated by the boosters before they won the bid. Paris already has two of these three things built, so if the IOC truly wants to have a frugal games, they're going to go to Paris. The problem with the IOC is that they get almost all of their revenue from TV deals. They care about what looks good on TV. Boston would look fantastic on TV, and we're on the most valuable time zone in the world, the East Coast time zone. But we don't benefit from that, the IOC does. We should not believe their claims that they are looking for a frugal bid. Item number eight, all of the Olympic budgets are guaranteed by taxpayers. The IOC asks the host city to sign an agreement that revenue shortfalls or cost overruns will be, the risk of those will be borne by the public, will be borne by host governments. So if these estimates are off now, taxpayers will be paying for it. Item number nine, do not believe that insurance will cover this. Boston 2024's insurance policy for cost overruns is the Commonwealth of Massachusetts. That is the insurance policy. Item number 10, and perhaps some of you in this room are like this. It is very clear from polling that the more you learn about Boston 2024, the less you like it. A lot of us started at 51%, supportive of this idea. It sounds really cool. It's the Olympics. It's awesome. But then you learn it requires a taxpayer guarantee. Then you learn that the three most expensive Olympic venues need to be built from scratch. Then you learn that taxpayers are on the hook if those things go wrong. As you learn more about this bid, you realize that it is not a good deal for the Commonwealth of Massachusetts, and it is certainly not a good deal for the town of Brookline. I urge you to vote yes on Article 19. Thank you.
Okay, Mr. Schwartz. Nope.
That's a tough act to follow. I'm not a pro, I'm not a supporter of the Olympics. I just felt as if it was too early to make this decision. I really thought that we could, we don't need to make this decision now. I would like for more information to come about. I know Chris Dempsey has presented a lot of information, and it's really very hard to argue. But I think this is early in the process. Things are still happening, and I would like to just wait and see what comes about from this discussion. I know Chris has been very active. He's been out in front, and he's, because of his result, his efforts, the process has become more transparent, and the leaders are more accountable. For instance, a change in leadership has just recently happened. There have been several changes in leadership, and plans are still evolving, and I hope that this process continues, and I hope Chris would still be part of it. I just think it's too early to pass judgment, and I'd like to see more plans. I think we deserve to see more plans. And I think if things are not satisfactory, I would be very happy to vote in favor of opposition in the fall. I would just like to see more done. I think, as Chris mentioned, the Olympics are not going to improve the T. Well, nothing is really improving the T yet. I know we've talked about doing things like system prioritization. Maybe this would happen as a result of the Olympics. I don't see a lot being done to improve the T or to improve other forms of infrastructure, which would be important to hosting the Olympics. I want to make reference to several articles that have appeared recently. In Tuesday's Globe, there was a column by Andrew Young talking about the investments which accelerated civic priorities in Atlanta. The Centennial Park has become a centerpiece for the city. The Olympic Village has become housing for Georgia Tech. There's a similar plan to turn Olympic housing here into housing for UMass Boston that would free up housing for families to occupy. In a May 3 article in the Globe, it mentioned that South Boston political leaders who previously opposed just about anything have adapted a wait-and-see attitude towards the Olympics. They look at the opening of Dorchester Avenue, which has been closed for decades by the post office, as a plus, and the possible housing that's going to be built at Witten Circle also is a plus. If you're familiar with the Olympics in Barcelona, it has taken an area that was pretty derelict and turned it into a showpiece, and Barcelona has become a thriving city as a result. So who knows what will happen in Boston as a result? I think it's just too early. I don't think we have to wait, I don't think we have to make this decision now. I would like to wait a little bit longer to see what comes about, and I would like us not to send a message that Brookline is not open-minded about this. Let's just vote no action now, and if needed to revisit this in the fall, we should. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Hummel.
See if I can line this up right this time. Maybe not. Okay. Amy Hummel, town meeting member, Precinct 12, speaking for the advisory committee. The pageantry and excitement that surround the Olympics are undeniable, and the allure of possible jobs and development are enticing. But the thought of hosting the Olympics either in fact or by proxy in Brookline found little support on the advisory committee. For the majority, public policy considerations and financial concerns loom large. As to public policy, the majority of the committee agrees with the petitioner that the Olympics conversation will divert public discourse from pressing chronic public issues like affordable housing, homelessness, health care, and education towards more, towards matters related to winning the Olympic bid. Boston 2024's effort to secure the Olympic bid is already a weekly, if not daily headline, steering both public and private conversations. The majority agree that there's no guarantee that the Olympic projects would benefit the area in the long term when balanced against the overall costs, financial and otherwise. And it's likely that the money and resources spent would reflect the Olympic shadow and not true local needs and concerns. A minority of the committee considers this an opportunity to address some of those issues and possibly add to affordable housing stock or jumpstart core priorities like improving or expanding the MBTA. But as you've heard, Boston 2024 has already made clear that they're not asking for transportation changes beyond those already in the current transportation system. Most importantly, under the public policy concern umbrella, is the lack of sufficient democratic voice. The voters have little say in the matter beyond a possible statewide referendum in November 2016, a likely an up or down vote after many plans have been made and deals have been struck, providing no real public accountability for all that goes on. Brookline may host golf and a portion of the marathon route. But whether we do or not, our town, surrounded by Boston on three sides, will certainly be heavily impacted by the traffic, crowds, and extreme security measures that will shroud the Olympic Games. Yet more than two years into the process, our democratically-elected leaders have been left out of the conversation entirely. A minority of the committee did suggest, as you've heard Chuck say, that warrant 19, or warrant Article 19, comes to a town meeting too early. They would have preferred to see how the public bid shapes up for the Games, but the majority of the committee remained unconvinced that a more democratic process or conversation would emerge. The more the Games take shape, the less likely the public will have its say. And even if public policy reasons weren't sufficiently troubling to the committee on their own, the financial reasons are. The rough breakdown is on page 19-4 of your combined reports. But the $4.7 billion operating budget assumes ticket sales, broadcast revenues, and sponsorships, which are yet to be secured, and it also presumes a healthy economy. $3.4 billion in facilities costs relies on these hoped-for partnerships between private developers and landowners. The $5.2 billion for state infrastructure is publicly allocated money. It's already in the state budget. But the fact that the number is there in the bid underscores the possibility that public projects could be influenced by the Games instead of realistic community needs. The $1 to $2 billion for security funding will likely come from the feds, but, so that's all taxpayers, all of us, but Brookline will also pay an indirect security cost for what will presumably be extensive planning and extra details. Historical financial overruns for the Olympics in the U.S. and elsewhere, for whatever reason, are enough to look askance at these numbers and assumptions. But the biggest concern of all to the committee was the taxpayer guarantee that the IOC requires the host city to sign. It obligates us, or Boston at least, to guarantee the Games will go on as planned regardless of the cost.
One minute.
Thank you. Every community, including ours, will pay if Boston requires the financial help from the state, like the bankrupt Lake Placid did after their Winter Games. Only L.A. made a truly remarkable profit hosting the Olympics, and that was because they were the only remaining viable host at this time, and they refused to guarantee, they refused to sign the guarantee or build new facilities to accommodate the Games. Boston has no such leverage, and of course, we haven't even been asked. So the majority of the advisory committee agrees with the petitioner that the lack of public process is unacceptable and that the likely financial and social costs are too high. So by a vote of 16 to 4, with two exceptions, the advisory committee recommends favorable action on Article 19.
Thank you, Mr. Ananian and Mr. Bernbaum. Would you come forward and sit in the front row? And I remind those of you who are dribbling out to leave your handheld devices in the containers for that purpose in the back of the auditorium. Go ahead, sir.
Dr. C. Scott Ananian, Precinct 10. They really are scattered all over the place these days. Sorry. So I will be brief. I think, I just think that this vote is premature. No action, I'm not a huge fan of the Olympics as they are constituted today, but I have hope for the Olympics as they may be constituted in the future. No action is not an unthinking vote for the Olympics. It just signifies that we have an open mind, still, about the process and about the potential. Boston is the birthplace of democracy. We can't affect change by turning our backs. Let's hold, open the door and then hold their feet to the fire. Think big. These are, there are inevitably details we are going to disagree with. Even if the process was done perfectly, as we could imagine, there will be compromises. That is how things happen, even in a democracy. But let's not think just purely of what this means for Brookline, but let's open the door to the world, our neighbors, and host an event that's dedicated to the promotion of global unity, as we do for the marathon, which also does not benefit Brookline. It causes great inconvenience to us, yet we still do it because we are hosts, and we are good hosts. So let us be good hosts for now. I urge no action. Vote no action today. You will have another opportunity to vote against the Olympics, I promise you. In fact, I suggest that you call the question now, vote no action now, and then we will return to this in the fall, almost certainly. Thank you.
Well, I'm not going to accept a motion for... Yes?
Point of information.
Well, there is no such thing as a point of information. You have a question, ma'am?
Yes.
Okay. Ask your question.
Paul Friedman, town meeting member, Precinct 14. Mr. Moderator, when will you consider a call the question motion?
After some more speakers. Mr. Bernbaum and Ms. Granoff.
I'm Lee Bernbaum, a citizen in Precinct 9 and the lead petitioner on this article. I wanted to take a couple of minutes to address the questions about this being too early. I think this is a refrain that you hear a lot from Boston 2024. I'd like to remind that in their world, this process began a couple of years ago, when they started their plans and began their pitch to the USOC. Just because we have been interacting with this since January does not mean that it is the beginning for them. They continue to use a process of slowdown to try to obfuscate the question. The continual changes in leadership have provided them opportunities to say, give us another 30 days, give us another 60 days, give us another 90. The bid is due this September, which is before our fall town meeting. The bid is due this September, regardless of what happens. And every time they ask for another 30 days buys them another 30 days without having any meaningful dialogue, without having any opportunity to speak about the actual plans that they're actually going to implement, an opportunity to avoid telling us those plans, and an opportunity to be unaccountable. We have a lot of opportunities to improve our infrastructure here in the Boston metro area and in Brookline specifically. We can do those without the Olympic Games, and in fact, I believe we can do them a lot better without having the distraction of putting on an event for the rest of the world. I think it'd be great to be able to hold the IOC's feet to the fire. I think it's something that could be very useful. However, there exists no mechanism by which to do this. As long as cities continue to sell themselves out in order to host the Games, they can basically demand whatever they want and have indeed done so. We do indeed host the marathon every year. The Ryder Cup has been here in town, and of course, the World Series on our doorstep a few times of late. The problem is that the Olympics isn't any one of those events. It's all of them at the same time for weeks on end, and it's done with, on our dime, but not for us. One of the great things about having the marathon in town is we can all go down to Beacon Street and watch. That's not the case, of course, with the Olympics, between the intense security, between the ticket prices, and the fact that the event is really for everyone else and mostly those on television. It's not an event for us, despite us being the ones who have to sacrifice to make it happen. I'd like to point out that it's not just the couple of events in Brookline. I know that something comes up, and they say, well, fine, we can not host golf in Brookline. But there's a lot of events planned for just on our northern border. BU is slated to host badminton, potentially hockey. Lower Alston, for those of us who cross the border from time to time or head into Cambridge, is slated currently to host aquatics, hockey, tennis, fencing, and water polo. And of course, the marathon, the Olympic marathon is not a one-day event. You have the men's marathon, the women's marathon, and then whatever they decide to do for the Paralympics, which is not described in great detail in the bid book that was released in January. And of course, we all have learned over the last 24 hours that there was a second bid book submitted to the USOC that contains a lot of additional information, including what appear to be pretty substantial taxpayer guarantees, despite the assurances of the mayor of Boston, the folks at Boston 2024, and others involved. So I think that's all for now.
Thank you, Ms. Granoff.
Hello, I'm Susan Granoff from Precinct 7. I too think it's premature for us to vote against a 2024 Boston Olympics, particularly when it could offer economic and cultural...
A little closer to the mic, please, ma'am.
Particularly when it could offer cultural and economic benefits to our own constituents. First, it would create thousands of jobs and bring billions of dollars into the Massachusetts economy. According to an independent economic analysis published by UMass's Donahue Institute, a Boston Olympics would likely create 4,000 construction jobs each year for the six years leading up to the Olympics, and thousands of temporary jobs the year of the event, and generate a total of $9.5 billion in economic activity in Boston and Massachusetts. Businesses in Brookline would directly benefit from this increased tourist spending, as would individuals in Brookline who could choose to rent out their homes or rooms during the Olympics. Second, the deadline associated with holding the Olympics would spur infrastructure and public transportation improvements that might otherwise not take place for years or ever. There's nothing like a hard deadline, knowing that the whole world will be watching, literally, to get the MBTA to actually make the renovations needed by our transportation system that should have been made years ago. Finally, Brookline residents would also benefit from the opportunity, through temporary jobs as volunteers, et cetera, to meet and come into contact with more people from across the U.S. and around the world, and the chance to actually attend the Olympics, perhaps, at relatively minimal cost. Finally, dealing with the specific concerns raised by the petitioner. I agree, there are worthier social and economic needs that the money used for the Olympics could be better spent on. But this is private money, being donated expressly to fund an Olympics. It's not money that would be made available... It's not money that would be made available to pay for these other expenses if the Olympics doesn't take place. The concern about the expense of taxpayers to pay for the security of the Olympics done by the federal government, if there's any Olympics held anywhere in the United States, the taxpayers, including us, would be contributing the same amount. So I don't think that that's necessarily a factor in our decision here today. Second, if the marathon were to run through Brookline, it would not be, be anywhere near as disruptive to Brookline as the Boston Marathon is. The Boston Marathon, as you know, has more than 30,000 runners of varying abilities and speeds. The Olympic Marathon will have only 100 runners, all at elite level, at elite levels. So rather than requiring any streets be roped off for nearly a full day, the Olympic runners will pass through Brookline in less than 30 minutes. As for the, as far as the potential overruns, to me, this is the biggest question. And I believe that the Olympic planners have come up with an excellent plan for addressing this concern through the use of insurance. Note, it's not inevitable that there will be an overrun. The three most recent Olympics held in the U.S., Salt Lake City, Atlanta, LA, did not have an overrun. But I know this is Boston, so let's assume that there will be an overrun. I too do not want the taxpayers on the hook to pay for it, but what the planners have proposed is the use of layers of insurance for multiple insurers as a way to eliminate the risk that taxpayers would be on the hook for any overrun.
One minute.
Okay. It's a sensible rational plan. It replaces uncertainty and fears about the risk of an overrun with a known fixed cost that can be budgeted for and paid for in advance through private funding. Let's face it, this is probably Boston's one and only chance to host the Olympics, ever. I suspect the reason that Boston is being nominated and considered is because of what happened at the marathon bombing and Boston's admirable response to it. But people forget, and in another decade or two, that will no longer resonate with Olympic Committee decision-makers. I would hate for Brookline to play any role in Boston losing out on its one and only opportunity to host the Olympics, particularly so early in the process. Why the rush to approve this resolution now? Let's give Boston 2024 more time to respond to our concerns before pulling the plug on the entire project. I spoke with a vice president of...
Please conclude, Ms.
Okay, I spoke with the vice president of 2024. They have volunteered to send people, given a couple of weeks' notice, they will send anyone we need to any government...
Conclude means...
I urge you to vote no action.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Franco. No, we're gonna, we're gonna hear from, I think we need to hear from the Board of Selectmen on this issue, and I'll hear from one more opponent, and then I'll entertain that motion. Mr. Franco.
Ben Franco.
Mr. Salzman, would you come forward, please?
Ben Franco for unanimous Board of Selectmen. The Board of Selectmen urges a vote of favorable action by 4-0 and with one abstention.
Thank you, Mr. Salzman. See if you can be as brief.
I will be, I will be. Good evening, Dan Salzman, town meeting member, precinct six. I think the bottom line here is, it is, it's premature. We have not heard from Boston 2024 on these issues, these good issues, these important issues that have been raised. We have not heard from them. It's frustrating and it's unacceptable, but we have not heard. This can't go on forever. We have the, a new bid, or, I'm sorry, a new proposal that's coming out in, sometime in June, they say. There's going to be a referendum. This can't drag on forever. Let's give it a few more months, let's see what they say, we can be right back here, and we can vote against it at that time. This is a real strong message that we're sending. Brookline can lead possibly, Boston can lead. There's a desire to make the Olympics sustainable and economical. What if we can pull that off here in Boston? And I don't think that we should, we should turn this off right now. We have some time, let's listen to what Boston 2024 has to say. Thank you. Vote no action.
Thank you. Is there a second to the motion for the question? Okay, I have two speakers, Gary Jones and Alyssa Jonas, who signed up to speak in favor of this motion, and one, Mr. Aronson, two... Sorry? Oh, sorry. Ms. Jonas is opposed, as is Mr. Aronson. A vote to terminate debate will of course eliminate their right or ability to speak. Those in favor of calling the question terminating the debate, please raise your hands. Those opposed, motion carries by a two-thirds vote. On the motion on page 19, there are 35 town meeting members will have a, undoubtedly have an electronic vote. Okay, we will have an electronic vote and go out and blaze of glory here. This is Article 19, main motion. Okay. A one is a yes vote in favor of the resolution on page 19-1. Two is a no vote on that resolution, and three is an abstention. That concludes our business, and I call for a motion to dissolve the annual town meeting. Is there a second? All those in favor, please say aye. Those opposed, no. The annual town meeting is dissolved. Thank you very much, ladies and gentlemen.